If you've not signed up, if you did not sign up when you came in, please do so at the table back with Chadley. We're trying to keep a good list of everybody who's here. It's our hope that this will end up being the first of several meetings to come. We'd like to set up kind of a regular meeting process to keep communications going as far as our business community is concerned. And I can tell you this, with rain falling on the day of this meeting, we may schedule one of these once a week. So we get a little bit more rain in this area, let's keep our fingers crossed. My name is Don Ferguson. And that's Will Lowery. No problem, you alright? No problem. Be careful folding the chairs down because they do come down pretty quick, they're pretty hard. So, my name is Don Ferguson and I'm the village administrator and I'd like to thank you all for taking the time tonight to come through the rain and to spend a few minutes to talk to us. This is really a very simple meeting and a very basic meeting. And as I mentioned, it's a meeting that we hope will be the first of many to come. We think it's important to try to establish and start establishing some regular communications to the point where our business community can talk to each other and then work through issues, see if issues we can help you with. But really come together as a community even more so than we are right now to improve our success and our effectiveness. As I mentioned, my name is Don Ferguson. There are a couple of other folks I'd like to introduce that are here. And do you know Laura Tracy? Laura is in the Chamber. And we're glad to have Laura here. And Chadley Hollis. Where did Chad go, there he is, right there. Chadley is our tourism director. This is not a Chamber meeting. And this meeting is not about the Chamber. But we will probably talk about the Chamber. And we're going to talk about our roles and responsibilities from a standpoint of our community and our economy. Chadley, I'm going to start with, is our tourism director. And I think there's probably maybe a little bit of a misunderstanding about what his role is in this community. And I felt like we take this opportunity tonight first and foremost to let you know what his job really is. And his job by statute is to effectively implement a strategy to increase overnight visitation in our community. So if he promotes any businesses directly, it really is the promotion of lodging establishments. As opposed to individual retail establishments. And I think that probably sometimes people get mixed up by what his role is in this community. But his role is to increase tourism that hopefully will benefit our local business community. I will tell you, we do our best to push the limit on that translation. We do our best through that tourism marketing effort, through that community marketing effort, to also try to promote our businesses, restaurants, retail shops. And do as much as we can as we're allowed to by law with the dollars that are spent. But the dollars that he spends are dollars that are raised by the lodging industry, not the city's general fund. And those dollars by law are supposed to go back into promoting heads and beds, is the simplest way to put it. Laura, as you know, is the head of the Chamber. And the Chamber of Commerce is an organization that's here to support businesses. And here to promote a healthy business environment and to support businesses and help them through whatever issues they may have. There are other organizations that can exist at the same time as the Chamber and can coexist that may supplement even what their role is. So we'll talk about this. I want to stress first and foremost, this is not a Chamber bashin'. But I'm also going to tell you this, we're very interested in hearing, if you have a concern about anything tonight, we're interested in hearing that, be it the Chamber, be it tourism, be it the city, be it our business community, whatever. We're interested in talking about that tonight and starting those communications. So we've done the introductions, we've talked a little bit about the purpose of it. Tonight we're also going to briefly touch on the Main Street Improvement Project to give you an update. We're going to give you somewhat of a state and Soleado economy report. Then we're going to talk about some merchant incentive programs that exist and that we're looking at developing. And then we're going to open the floor. I'll try to move very quickly through the top items. Because frankly, I'm more interested in the questions, the input, the comments, and votes. So first of all, let's look at the Main Street Improvement Project. You've seen the construction and no doubt have felt the construction. And I'm sorry to say, probably have felt the impact of some of that construction. But trust me, it's close to being over. We're just actually a few months away. $5.2 million project that's funded by the state of Texas through the Texas Department of Transportation. It involves the installation of sidewalks, decorative lighting, parking and drainage improvements. The projected completion date for this work is the spring of 2020. And as of this morning, they are on target for that. This contractor has a pretty good track record of coming in early as far as their work goes. And provided the weather works and provided they get out of the rock they're into right now, they should be able to move in that direction pretty quickly to get out of here. Sidewalk, lighting, parking and drainage improvements, south of Rock Creek, are projected to be complete by mid to late December. Right now, as you know, they're up by Blacksmith. And they're up working in the area of Main and Blacksmith. What you're going to see is this, they have some curb inlets that are under construction right now, they're being manufactured. And when those arrive in the next few weeks, they're going to drop what they're doing on the drainage and go down, do the lateral crossings, what I call in the south end of Main Street, the State's Coast Royal end of Main Street. They're going to do the lateral crossings and connect to the sewer pipe, to the Sorel Sewer Pipe that they've already put in. And then they'll go in and put what sidewalk is to be in, in addition to the decorative lighting. And they'll go through and get all of that work done, hopefully by mid to late December. They are aware of Sorel. It has been emphasized to them on a regular basis. And they have committed that they will not be working on Sorel weekend. And going to do what they can to get their equipment out of the way. Does that mean barricades will still be in place as far as the barriers? Tape, some cones, yes. Those are things they just can't pick up and leave, it's a construction site. But they're going to do everything they can to minimize the impact on that. And we'll be working with them in the coming weeks to coordinate those efforts. Main Street will be closed at Rock Street starting January 4th. And I think the thing to understand is this won't be a single lane closure. This will be a full closure of Main Street starting January the 4th. This is a milestone in their contract. And it's what they call an incentivized milestone. They have 40 days, starting January 4th, to get in and to remove that drainage cover that's underneath Main Street, right there by Solos Gallery. And to replace that with a brand new de-coach structure. When I talk about an incentivization that exists, they actually get paid by the state if they get out of there earlier than 40 days. And that's a significant effort to try to get them out of there in less than 40 days. And I will tell you, this contractor has a track record of meeting those incentives and doing pretty well in getting out of there. While that piece of Main Street is closed, it's important to understand that there will be an established detour and a well-signed detour around that area to make sure people can get to businesses on both sides of Main Street. You'll see plenty of signage, plenty of advance warning of that detour area. Also important to understand, the contractor has the ability to work 24/7 during that 40-day window. So you will see night work. I can almost assure you, every night they're able to work. Because again, they've got to pay back at the end to get out of there as fast as they possibly can. Plus, it's easier for them to get in and out and do that type of work without the vehicles and the pedestrians to deal with. So keep that in mind, January 4th, for a period of 40 days, Main Street will be closed at that point. The contractor is dedicated and committed to continuing to work to try to keep driveways open during the process. I know it's difficult. There's no question about the fact it's difficult. If you have problems with them, they have points of contact. If they've not been in your business, they will be in your business, or someone from the state will. If you have problems with that contractor or problems with the state, call me. I have my business card, you can call me 24/7. But call me and we'll do what we can to get those problems resolved. They understand the sensitivities, they understand the need to keep the driveways open and the need to try to minimize the impact. There's no way to eliminate and to avoid an impact. But they're going to do what they can to try to minimize that. Does anybody have any questions on this portion of the presentation? Everybody kind on board? Yes, ma'am.
In the 40 days that the whole of Main Street will be closed, or the proportion of Main Street will be closed in both directions.
Just a rock break down.
What safety measures are going to be taken on having additional DPS or other officers? Because if there's an accident on the highway, traffic automatically comes in on that northbound-south side. How is that going to be addressed? Because if you close down Main Street, it's going to be worse. It'll be as bad as when the bridge collapsed.
Right, right, no question about that.
What is the contractor going to do to commit to hiring off-duty personnel and make sure that if there is an accident on I-35, heavy trucks cannot get on Main Street? Because they won't be able to get off.
They will have off-duty officers that work overtime like they do right now at night when they're doing work. During the day, our police department will be there. They will also have extra officers in place for that law enforcement effort. The state will be in contact with the NPS to coordinate the event. We do have a problem on the interstate, people start trying to bail off. By that stage of the game, I want to tell you, we will probably have 24/7 law enforcement coverage in the city. So we're going to have officers on duty too at that stage of game instead of going on where we'd like to do right now.
For a temporary basis, can that ramp be closed to heavy trucks?
That's something we can pose the question to them on. Absolutely we can, have no problem doing that. And then talk to them about that. My hunch is you're going to see a lot of digital signboards out. And we've not gotten their full closure plan as far as the signage goes. But my belief is that they're going to do what they can, and if it turns out that that's something that needs to be looked at. The goal is this, the goal is to do whatever we do, whatever they do, that they do it in such a fashion that it does not create the impression that downtown is closed. And that's the critical piece. You can put digital boards out every 500 feet and tell people beware a road close ahead and send the wrong message. But the key is to have the detour route established and signed well enough to the point that people know they can come and go and get out. But also have a response plan in the event we do have an issue on the interstate. Or quite frankly, an issue on Main Street.
But if you have a digital board, you can just as easily say no heavy trucks on Main Street.
Sure, you can.
And put a date on that.
We're aware of that issue and they are too. And I think it's something we will definitely work through with them as far as dealing with that. Yes, ma'am.
I have a question. Everything up there stated thus far talks about south of Rock Creek and completion then. What about north of there?
North, what they will do is when they finish everything south, since that's the congestion point at Main and Royal, they want to get out of there. And then everything from that point on is northbound. And the way they're going to work on the northbound side is this, they're going to work on the eastbound side of Main Street until they get to Soleado Plaza. And then they're going to come back and go Rock Creek and work their way on the westbound side with the installation of the drainage and those stuff there. Once the project's fully complete, so you all know, they will come in and they're going to do an overlay, the full length of Main Street. So you'll see a new surface top. You're also going to see some different parking designs that are intended to try to enhance your ability to park, get in and out and get to the businesses. Right now, it's first come, first served, whoever parks first kind of sets the trend for the day. The goal is to do it and actually create somewhat of an organized parking pattern downtown.
Okay, so my question is, again, what is going to be done during the holiday shopping season for North Michigan?
What is going on right now?
How much of a hot mess is it going to be in November and December?
What is happening right now is probably indicative of what you can expect. And that is heavy equipment, potentially some hammering. You know, no lane closures on the north side, just so you know. Right now, the reason they've been doing lane closure on the south side is because of the narrowness. North side's wider, so you should not have a problem. And then of course, they're going to work to improve access to the businesses and their driveways.
Will that be going on during Sorel?
Sir?
Will that be going on during Sorel?
No. They have agreed to pull off here in Sorel. So what you should have is you should have barriers in place. And you should have clean pavement and no noise and no jacking. Yes, sir.
So, once they start on that north part, are there going to be any closures to get into the business? Or are they going to keep that open?
They're going to do everything they can to keep the driveways open. They're not going to be able to stay out in front of your business. But they're going to do what they can to keep the driveways open. And even when they do have to close, they will work with the business owners to deal with that.
The second part of that question is, is the village slash Chamber slash visitors center going to do anything as far as advertising that this is over there, destruction, business over there, destruction? Or is that all of us as a business center?
I can tell you from a-
The second part of that question is, are there going to be meetings as far as us advertising? Our business district, our business is a large or something, so it's a good idea.
From a tourism standpoint, Chadley has already started that push. I'm sure the Chamber will work to try to send the message out too. But I will tell you, from a tourism standpoint, we've already started that process. There's an education process that people have to follow. And I believe he started that several weeks ago in fact. So it's going to be one of those situations that if you have ideas, if you have suggestions, don't end it here, give me a call after this as you grow and develop through this thing. They're going to do everything they can to minimize. The good news is, when on the north side, the roadway's wider. It's going to impact everybody, no question. But the roadway's wider and you should have two-way traffic. Yes, ma'am.
Was there any talk or discussion given to the fact that retail's primary season isn't two weeks? Two weekends? It is pretty much from Thanksgiving through December 34th. And the fact, I think I speak for everybody in here when I say we, this is the critical, the crucial shopping quarter of the year, which the other three quarters are paid for. And you're expecting us to do that in just two weekends? Just two weekends?
They are aware of the sensitivities. They're aware of the concern that this is a peak period and it's a prime period for us. And they're going to do everything they can to minimize that impact. The two periods are being committed to at this stage of the game because they don't want to be anywhere near the pedestrian and the vehicle traffic at that stage of the game from a safety standpoint. And also they feel it's important to keep it open for the businesses not having to deal with that.
Right, but-
But to tell them to shut that project down from Thanksgiving to New Year's, no. They wouldn't do that.
Well, even during, say, the first couple of weeks that they promised to take out on the two weekends, can they do it during the week they do?
I can certainly visit with them about that. And let it take two weeks out, I can certainly ask them if that's under our budget.
You know, you're talking about people have got to get their, they've got to get the money stashed for the tourism season. That just doesn't happen like what we're having right now. We don't have the foot traffic.
Point's well taken. Point's well taken. And we will ask them about the two weeks, but I don't think you're going to get any type of response. Yes, on a month and a half to two months, I really don't. And as it is, I will tell you this, the project is going to finish about six to eight months earlier than they originally were projecting.
And that's wonderful that they're, you know, that they're going to get it done around the clock during a slow time in January. But can't they push some of that to that sort of time in January? Because I don't know, I see an accident waiting to happen out heavy machinery from Thanksgiving through the prime shopping season being Black Friday through December 24th.
I think they will work through that process with safety in mind and with business opening being in mind. So I think you're going to see that they're going to do the best they can.
The financials. How many more businesses are now going to go under due to this? It could have started earlier in the year.
It is a state project. And the village clearly has expressed its position with them about the sensitivities in the downtown area. They are very well aware of that. But the project has to get done. And at the end of the day, the business district is going to benefit from the work that's being done. And we understand that you all-
Whatever, if we survive.
Yeah, if we survive.
You will survive. I will tell you this, that the issue is this, you've been gut checked, you've been gut checked twice. And I know this is the third gut check. And we've expressed that to them. And expressed the fact that they need to get in and get out as quick as they can and be sensitive to your peak operating rates. And we'll continue to do some. Yes, sir?
Is this a DOT funded project, or I'd kind of say sorry that we shut down 35?
I think that's a fair way to assess it.
Is there a thing, like the business community, as business owners or the village, can express to DOT maybe to get some kind of advertising that Soleado is open to air charges? Stop all the rumors?
That's early, I will take that idea to them. It's not a bad idea to see what they can do to help. Their typical response in text talk form and fashion, and if you've had experience with them, as we've had, is government advertising is government advertising.
Yeah, but they can, I mean, they can advertise the UT's plan over here.
Oh no, I'm with you. I'm totally there.
Or just put a billboard or something.
Put a board up, some type of digital board that sends a message. We will- Yeah. I will mention that to them in our meetings. I will mention that to them in our meetings. And I hear exactly what you're saying.
Well, you can hear it, but what gets done about it, just saying?
At the end of the day, they make their final call. And we can push. I don't control Texas Department of Transportation. So that's the Main Street project. Any other questions? Yes, ma'am. Only one, only one here if you want to. We can pass it around if you want to do that.
You can probably hear me loud enough by the thing. At least my wife says that.
I'm just going to ask if you have any further questions?
Sure. That's me? No, I'm not a big person to do that. All right, question. What are the questions? On Main Street. So let's look at the state of the economy. And I think this is something that a lot of times gets lost in everything we've been going through. But we've gone back and have looked at the historical numbers. And what I want to tell you is, the economy, though we've gone through an awful lot in the last couple of years, has actually held its own in this community. In fact, if all goes as planned, tomorrow we should get a check from the state which will wrap up our fiscal year in sales tax collections. And we're anticipating that will push us well over any year we've had as far as sales tax collections. Our sales tax collection is running about 15% right now over last year. And again, it's the highest year we've ever had in collections. Our August check, which represents June sales, was the largest August check we've had in the history of this village. When you look at the history of incorporation to date, with the exception of fiscal year 13 and 14, when we had some slight dips, our sales tax revenues have grown each year since we incorporated back in 2000. That doesn't mean some businesses aren't struggling or haven't struggled in the past. They have. And that we're sensitive to. But understand as a whole, from an economic standpoint, the numbers are pretty strong. From an overnight visitation standpoint, we've had a 56% increase reported in hotel-motel tax revenues this year over last year, with a 27% increase in rooms this year. So people are coming, the rooms are filling up. And when they come, they spend money. And I think the numbers seem to show that. And I think something we shouldn't overlook, and that is in the last 24 months, we've had $15 million in public capital improvements made in the immediate downtown area. And millions of dollars of capital reinvestment, private capital reinvestment in that particular area. And potentially some more money to be spent from what we understand based on the meeting we had last week. So the state of the economy is really not that bad at this stage of the game. Can it be better? Absolutely. But the numbers seem to show some strength. We've lost a few businesses, no question about that. And I will tell you, I've managed small cities for 21 years. And small businesses come and go. When some leave, others come to fill the gap. And I think you will see that. This community has proven its resiliency. This business community did not lose 80 businesses during the interstate construction project. You've heard that statement? There is no evidence to that.
It's been stated repeatedly by our own mayor, Ron.
This community did not lose 80 businesses during the interstate project. And I'm going to leave it at that. If it did, trust me, the numbers would not have been a slight dip. The numbers would have been a significant drop. Yes, sir?
So, on that, we're seeing a fast rate, so looking towards, do you have any new businesses coming in that are projected to come in? Or is the village doing the incentive thing? New businesses coming in?
We're going to talk about that in just a moment. We're going to talk about that in just a moment. I will tell you this, we have had in recent weeks some inquiries from businesses looking at exploring relocating here from Georgetown and from some other communities.
Hey, Don?
Yes, sir?
Could you repeat that question so people-
I'm sorry, my bad. He said, are there incentive packages or can do anything to try to encourage other businesses to come in and fill the gaps?
Do you have a forecast on new businesses coming in?
We see it as being a destination for small business. And based on the inquiries we're getting, I think that's happened. He asked, do you have a forecast for small businesses coming in? And our comment was, we're projecting growth to continue. So let's talk about incentives. A lot of these you may not be aware of that exist. And we're in the process of going back in and reopening the treasure chest on this and trying to make these more powerful. We have an economic development strategy that was adopted by the village a couple of years ago. And that incentive package is weighted towards big business. Big department stores, big retail outlets, those type of things. It's not really what we're here to talk about. We're talking about trying to keep the local business community alive and well and growing. So in looking at that strategy, there's a void. There's really not any incentive package that exists for the smaller businesses in this town. So one of the things we're doing, and you're going to be hearing some talk actually in the next couple of weeks about this, is going in and modifying that strategy and trying to move the thresholds, move the bars to the point where all of you all have the ability to take advantage of the same type of incentives as the bigger businesses would. Meaning potential sales tax refunds, meaning potential ad valorem tax rebates, meaning grants for facade improvements, for landscaping improvements, for sign improvements. We have a strategy that says we have the ability to find all of those types of incentives to try to bring business to this community. We have not really gone out and marketed that over the years. But that's something we're gearing up to go do. But our first and most importantly at this stage of the game is get it to the point where it's locally friendly. Where it's user-friendly by the local business, you, you. Not Walmart, not Target, not CVS. But to the point that the Main Street business can prosper and can benefit from it if they want to come in and do a facade improvement. Belton has a similar program. Some of the facade improvements you've seen on Belton are the results of city grants. They're normally 50/50 grants, they're not giveaways. I don't know of many cities that do full giveaways. Normally there's a match. Normally it's a one-to-one match. You get 5,000, we get 5,000. You get 1,000, we get 1,000. For those type of grants. For the sales tax refunds, obviously, there has to be a pretty significant capital outlay to be able to qualify for tax relief. But we feel we need to do that. We have a local business in town that will go unnamed at this point that's about to make a million dollar reinvestment in this community. There was no benefit package available to them based on our strategy that's in place right now. And our feeling is, we need to make it accessible to the people, to the businesses, to the backbone of our local economy. So you're going to be seeing a little bit about that. In fact, you're going to be seeing a lot about that in the coming days. The city council, the Board of Alderman, excuse me, has moved to create, or recreate if you will, the Economic Development Advisory Board. And that board will be working to support local businesses. And also to work on future economic development, as the gentleman asks. To develop strategies, to develop campaigns, to develop programs to go out and to try to bring in the right businesses. And I stress the right businesses. And I will tell you this, I encourage you to get involved in this process. Because there's going to be opportunities for public input on the type of businesses that you want to come into Soleado and that you want us to go out and market. Okay? Get involved. Don't sit back on the couch and watch it happen. It's your opportunity to have a say. And I will tell you, it's an important opportunity. Because they're developing the game plan. And you want to be part of that game plan as far as the type of industry, the type of business, how we grow from a commercial standpoint. So how? You can get involved, there will be public meetings. His question was, how do you get involved? There will be public meetings that will be held where you'll have the opportunity to weigh in. Send emails to City Hall, they get disseminated, they get distributed to members of the board. Let people know. But my belief is, the Economic Development Committee will start with an initial set of public hearings. And then that'll go to board, P&amp;Z would probably be involved in that situation. and then that'll go to the board. P&amp;Z would probably be involved in that situation. There'll be an extensive round of public input opportunity, but don't wait until the end. Please don't wait. If you have interest in serving on that board, they appointed three members to that board at last week's board meeting. And they're looking for three more members. So if you have interest, you don't have to live in the city. Be good if you're a business person in the city. You have to have an interest, I guess, is the best way to put it. But get involved. Come by City Hall, fill out an application. Get it in this week. Because I think they're gonna talk about filling the vacancies next week. They're gonna want you to show up at the meeting next Thursday night and say a few words about yourself. One of your guests here tonight did that, and she got appointed. So don't be afraid to get involved in that way. If you don't want to just talk for public comment, get involved in the actual process itself. We're looking at the possibility of doing a leakage study. How do you even know what a leakage study is? A leakage study is basically a study that looks at where your dollars, or Solado dollars, are being spent and on what. And the purpose of that is to identify shortfalls in the local economy that are being picked up by neighboring communities. Translation, our clothes being bought here, where shoes being bought, where you eat, those type of things. It's a very detailed report. That's an eye-opening report. And the, the data from that, a lot of time, is very helpful when you go out and start recruiting business to come into the community. So you're probably gonna be hearing a little bit more about this. The decision has not been made to do that yet. We think it's something they need to get serious consideration to. And so you'll be hearing a little bit about that. I see Katie. Katie is the chairman of our Planning and Zoning Commission. And the Planning and Zoning Commission is gonna be launching a review of our zoning codes to look at a number of things. Probably most important of which, right now, seems to be putting the proper regulations in place to preserve the unique character through our zoning ordinance of our main business district, Main Street, Royal Street. Making sure we have the right types of zoning allowed in that area, making sure we have the right look of development in that area. And that's really, really important. Because let's face it, in addition to the uniqueness of your business, the appearance of that area, that environment is what brings people to this community. You hear it every day when you talk to folks. So you're gonna be hearing a little bit more about that in the coming months. And then the other thing I want to talk to you about is looking at the possible development of what I would call a business resource center. And I've been involved in setting this up in some other communities. It's a very effective tool. And what you typically do is you typically partner with a local university and their business department. And they come in, they take office hours on a regular basis, to the point where you, as a business owner, can come in and confidentially meet with them and let them go through a process of analyzing your business, your business plan. If you don't have a, how many of you have a business plan? Taking that business plan, maybe giving it a fresh look. If you don't have a business plan, maybe developing one that looks at your long-term growth and development. That is there to help with special issues such as merchandising, such as marketing, you know, such as positioning yourself in the community itself. We're working on this concept. We haven't figured out which university to approach. We've talked to a couple, but it's something we really think would be beneficial. And it's something we probably would run through the city. Again, the information is confidential. That is the backbone of the success of a business resource center. Stuff, I don't know. Yes, ma'am? No, ma'am. That, that would be a situation that we'll work on through our office as far as the business center. From an employee standpoint, we would not actually staff that center. It would be a situation where we probably would make space available or find space in the downtown area for them to serve and to hold basically office hours on that standpoint. A contract would probably be required with that university. The cost of that would be something we'd have to negotiate and probably look at a budget method in the coming fiscal year. But it wouldn't be staffed by the city.
One thing you might want to look into is Thor, which is, I guess, like, small business administration thing. They staff somebody several days when we come to Georgetown. Because that's where my business mentor is. So that may be something for you to look into.
And you found that helpful? See, it's, 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 it's really something that would be good for this community. There's no community too small for that type of operation. It gives outside expertise. We're all out experts. I don't know it all, I guarantee you I don't know it all. You don't know it all, I guarantee you you don't know it all. We learn every day. And this is something that I think would be a very helpful new, new source. You know, they could come in and do audits, as far as walk through businesses, walk through businesses, give you advice, those type of things. The backbone service, though, is the business planning. And working through that with you. So you can see there's some efforts. Is that something you all might be interested in? You think it might be helpful? Okay. So we're gonna look at that. And, and additionally, we'll look at other incentives. If you have other ideas, other incentives that you think would be useful to the community as we work to try to bring everybody together and move forward in a more in sync fashion, let us know. Believe me, let us know. You all are bright folks, and you've got ideas. And quite frankly, you're living the war on the front line. We're not. Yes, sir? I can do that if you'd like. He asked, "Would I get into talking a little bit about future growth?" I'll do that briefly, but I really want to get into more, turn this mic over to you all, to talk to each other and offer your thought processes to each other. As far as future growth goes, the Sanctuary Residential Project is about to begin construction. The word we have? Yeah, it's the residential piece. The commercial piece, we still don't have any filings on that at this stage of the game. And we've promised several dates, and we still don't have anything. That doesn't mean it's not gonna happen, but we know the residential is gonna happen. The plat's been approved, and they're planning to break around potentially next week, is what they're telling us. Yes, sir? About a hundred and eighty-six, if I'm not mistaken, in the first phase. And then there's about another hundred and eighty, a hundred and ninety in the second phase. The first phase will take three to five years to complete. The second phase will follow. So all in all, you're gonna have probably in excess of, what? Three hundred and eighty homes, three hundred and fifty homes, something like that. And the commercial piece is gonna be a mixed-use development. It'll have retail, supposedly a hotel, and some type of entertainment venue in addition to some residential. You're probably gonna see some multifamily in that area. Not at this point. So you've got that. Just down the road here, at the intersection of Williams and West Village, we're anticipating a concept plan on that subdivision, on the old eight contract. We're hoping to get that concept plan in the next couple of weeks, we're being told. So that concept plan will be a mixed-use development. That will have residential, and it'll have some light retail mixed in with that. At the same time, there are discussions underway with the county outside of our city limits, but very close to our ETJ, not in the ETJ, but very close, for a nine-hundred-plus-lot subdivision. We are in discussions, in fact, at next week's meeting, Board of Alderman meeting. The board is expected to take action on an annexation petition for Bear Rosemont's development at the Royal Cross from Church, the one that kind of stirred some controversy. And they are, they've submitted a petition to annex that in. So we're anticipating, actually, construction plat on that subdivision in the next couple of days, too. So that process is moving. Mr. Rosemont's apparently still out of the country, but his partner is moving forward. So that's, that's where we stand on that. We've had communications with some folks about the property across from the high school behind Scott White Clinic. But quite frankly, there have been several people we've talked to about that. And largely, that's residential, and that's several hundred lots. So... Sir? Absolutely. Not a problem at all. And I'm gonna give you what I've got tonight. And know this, if you ever get asked a question in your shop and you need a question answered, you've got my cell phone to call twenty-four seven, and I'll give you the answer I've got if I've got it. Yes, ma'am? Okay, yeah. His question was, the reason he was asking the question about future development was not because he had any inside interest. He said it's because, you can imagine, as a business person, he gets asked questions all the time from people wanting to know what's true and what's not true, and what's ethical and what's not ethical. Good question, huh?
Sorry, I have a baby in my hands, and I don't want to wake him up and make him cry. And I notice on many of the points that you say reviewing, village is reviewing various things. Does that also mean revising? I've, I've been a member of many committees that revised growth plans, something I really enjoy, but I don't want to just review something. I want to be involved in actionable items. And because I have a big interest in the way that this community develops long-term, fifty-year term.
Let me tell you my answer to that question. She runs the microphone back up. And my question, my answer to that question would be, in order to revise, you have to review first. I would anticipate revision, but I'm not gonna tell you they're gonna revise it because then it looks like there's some underlying plan that's being put forward, and there really isn't. We've got documents that have been sitting on the shelves for several years that need to be updated. So I think there will be revision. Just what that revision will be will truly depend on your input and on the revision process, the review process that will take place. All right. The temperature down there is a lot cooler than it is up here, I can tell you that much. Heat rises, I guess. So what I'm gonna do now is ask Laura to come up and, and visit, and, and I want to open the door, really, to... Again, here's, and I caution again, let's not be attacking people today. Let's not be negative towards anybody. But one of the things I'm gonna hear, I'm just gonna kick out some comments that we hear at City Hall, okay? One of the comments that we hear at City Hall is, "I'm not a member of the chamber because I don't think they do things for the business." My comment is this, and that is, "You don't know until you give it a chance." And I'm not here to promote membership. But I will tell you, it's real easy to say that until you give it a chance. And if you have an experience that has been bad, I think it's important that we let them know that. And then we give and take with them on that, to see what can be done, to give them an opportunity to bring you into that fold so you have a more united business community, a more united front. Let me tell you something. People come into communities, in particular businesses come into communities, new business come into communities, and one of the strength factors they look at when they evaluate a community is the strength of the chamber and the strength of its membership. There is not a Chamber of Commerce in the state of Texas that has every business in a community as a member. Trust me. But I will tell you, and I'm not speaking for Laura, but I will tell you, I would bet she would want to know, if there are shortcomings, what those are. Not in a critical fashion, but what they could do to better serve you, to potentially cause you to be a member of that. That's question one. Question two. I think we need a merchants association as an alternative. Merchants Association. I will tell you, the role of a merchants association is much different than the role of a Chamber of Commerce. They're two totally different bodies. Chamber of Commerces are involved in supporting development of the business community. Merchants Associations typically handle the one-on-one issues between businesses in particular regions of the business community. They can coexist, and quite frankly, they should coexist. There's absolutely nothing wrong with having a merchants association in addition to a chamber. Yes, sir? A merchants association would be, uh... It's a group that would, that would be involved in maybe, uh... Sir? Oh, I, I think they, they represent businesses, individual businesses, as opposed to a chamber, which typically represents a business community. But they represent businesses individually on certain issues. They're, they're an input mechanism for things, for example, downtown projects, improvement projects. If the city decides to move back into Main Street, and those type of things. It, it's, it's an organization. It's an association, as I said. And I can tell you this, merchants associations typically don't include members, every, every member of the community. It's just a different action body in a business community. But they coexist. They're not in competition. So... They're funded by you. If it needs funding at all. It may be something that is simply an idea of sitting down and meeting on a monthly basis and talking about the issues, issues that you face as individual businesses. And raising those issues to the chamber, or to the village, or to whoever else. So it, it's a, it's a, it's a voice. It's a mechanism to, to try to create a little bit more of a united business voice. Chamber of Commerces include individual members. They include business members. They can include industrial members. They can include a lot of members from outside of this community. Very, very common, and nothing wrong with that. Because again, it's all going to your support of the business community. Merchants Associations are typically more of a, you know, boots-on-the-ground type approach, and more of a direct support piece. But they should coexist. And typically, I see Chamber of Commerces that actually have merchants association positions on their boards to help represent. So merchants associations. The thing I hear is the business community's fractured, disdivided. And I can tell you this, folks, the successful business community, I've done this twenty-one years, and have been in some very successful communities from a business standpoint. And the ones that are most successful are the ones that work together. They all get along together. They work together towards a common good and towards a common approach. Believe me, you're never gonna get everybody to agree. You're never gonna get everybody to say yes. The reality of it is, there's always diversity. But compromise, understanding, figuring out what is a big issue, what's a small issue. At the end of the day, you're all still talking to each other, and you're not out doing your own marketing campaigns as groups and those type of things. You're working together as a community, sending a solid, unified message to come to Solado, to shop Solado. It's, it's proven. I can guarantee you that. I've seen it too many times. I don't think the fracture is as great as some people would like to say. I really don't. But I think the way we solve those type of issues, and if there are divisions that exist, is we have meetings like this on a regular basis, where we try to bring everybody together. Some days you may have a hundred and fifty, some days you may have fifty. The next day you may have seventy-five. But we want to start a consistent communication process and try to help facilitate that if we can at all do that. The other thing I'm gonna say is this. You are known by the image you portray when you get hit up by the media. I spent twenty-plus years in the news media. I understand the news media. And I will tell you this. You may be angry because of something that's happened to you. But when you get on TV and you spray your venom, you may get it off your chest, but you're placing a burden on everybody else in this room. That is counterproductive. It's not Solado, and it's really not what's gonna make us succeed. Let me tell you something else about the news media business. The news media business is highly competitive regardless of the market you're in when it comes to news. And if I was a newspaper reporter and Tim had a story, my goal was to find something better than Tim had, so they'd all go and look at Tim's paper. So I'm gonna look for a different spin, a different angle. So if I've got one business telling me this, I'm gonna start going and talking to the other businesses. I'm gonna go start looking for the other thing. I'm not a believer in sugarcoating things. But I'm also a believer in this, it's important... But I'm also a believer in this, it's important that you carefully choose your words when you're in that arena. Because they can easily be misinterpreted. Sometime the most innocent of intent in front of a camera gets misread, gets misinterpreted, or seized by somebody who's a coward and wants to go out and make it negative and make it exciting. You've got to be careful. That doesn't mean you don't talk to them, that doesn't mean when K C N walks in and says, "We want to talk to you about Main Street," or "We want to talk to you about this business or that business." Don't be afraid to talk to them, but understand the message you're portraying. I think the lady from Spring House nailed it on the story I saw. Everybody was critical of the story that came out, talking about one of our local businesses that was looking to leave. And they went to Spring House, the most innocent of places. And her comment was, "You know, it really isn't that bad, things are really pretty good around here and somebody else will come in." And that's the reality. That's the message. You want people to come here. The negativity you send by choosing the wrong words or saying the wrong thing, and I'm not saying you don't lie, be honest with them, but understand, don't get lost in the micromanagement of the message. I've been on both sides. I had a discussion with a reporter the other day and she grinned and she said, "No, you're right." And when I started talking to her about some of the reasoning behind one of the stories she had done, she had no knowledge of that. Because her news editor told her, "Go out and get the story on Darlene and how she does this." You know, she went and got it done, she even looked at the whole picture. She didn't have time to, she didn't know. Darlene, I thought that was answering all the questions she was supposed to answer. And I'm using Darlene as an example, she wasn't the one that cornered. But you know what I'm talking about? Don't turn to the city and say, "No, you need to go talk to City Hall." I'm not going to talk to them. If they come and talk to you, don't be afraid, but just pick your words. And understand what you say in a foot can be taken a mile. Sometimes a long road. Laura, you want to offer some comments? Anything, yeah. And if you have questions for Laura, and let me tell you something, if you have input for Laura, we asked Laura to come to this because I'm hopeful that if there's some people who aren't members, I'd be intrigued to know why you're not a member, not a critical thing, and don't be embarrassed to say you're not. But what would it take to make you a member? Do you think we need to look at merchants associations, things like that? Laura?
Thank you, Tish. A lot of you out there are members, so thank you for coming and supporting us, being here with Dawn. And I appreciate all your feedback, I know it's been a frustrating few years. I mean, we opened our business right when the construction happened for the highway. And we were nervous, you know, I think we all were. But it takes all of us to keep moving forward in a positive direction and really see the long-term at the end of this dark tunnel that we've kind of been in. And that can be difficult, because where it's dark, it's lonely. But if you can be that ray of sunshine and be positive about things that even though we know deep inside have not maybe been all that great, the image you portray to people coming into your shop, people that you might meet on the street and they want to, you know, if you just have general conversations with potential visitors to our community, you have daily conversations with locals. And it's just, you know, you have a certain circle that is your safe circle for people that you can vent to. Those are not your customers. So I'm just going to leave that there and I'm going to talk a little bit about the Chamber and then I'll take questions. So for those of you who aren't members in the back, Amanda and Paulette are here representing the Chamber as well. We have folders, and in the folder, there's some information. What's a letter? It's from me, it talks about what the Chamber does on a regular basis, how we benefit your business. But the bottom line is, read it, get involved. No, don't say you don't have the information because it's there. And then we have a little handout. This little graphic breaks it all down and kind of gives you all the little modules. And at the very bottom, what it says is, "According to the national study by the Shapiro Group, the Chamber member businesses enjoy a 49% increase in consumer favorability rating, a 73% increase in consumer awareness, 68% increase in local reputation, and an 80% increase in the likelihood that consumers will patronize the business in the future." This is their study based on Chamber of Commerces nationwide, not particularly ours in particular. But it's about credibility and we offer, we are your support system. We are there to help you become better business owners and that will help you become better business managers and marketers and increase your skills that you might not already have. And it takes getting involved though to do that. Because we're going to continue inviting you to our morning coffees and we're going to continue inviting you to our networking after hours and we're going to do the workshops and we're going to put on the events that we put throughout the year. You know, we do Wildflower, we host, we host this Lato Art Fair, we have our golf tournament coming up, which needs sponsors still, if any of you are interested. And then we also, we're responsible for Christmas Troll. Now, Christmas Troll benefits the entire community, but it's funded through the Chamber. And I'm going to tell you right now, we did not make money on that. You know, the Chamber's a nonprofit, we have a single employee, Amanda Organ is our employee. And we have a board of directors comprised of 12 business owners or members. And we are all volunteers, we have our own businesses that we are running, we have our own lives that we are trying to do, but we still put in the effort to try and create an arena where we can attempt to help our business owners thrive. But you have to be involved in order to do that. So there's also, on the back, a hash sheet of some of the upcoming things that the Chamber is putting on. The next one is, Deanna wants the coffee, is it next week? Next week on Tuesday at 8:30 at the Museum Hall. It's not just for Chamber members, it's for everybody, it's for the business community. Same with our business after hours, it might be sponsored by the Chamber, but it is not solely for Chamber members. It is a way to network with our local businesses, get the word out, ask questions, you know? Everyone has a story, everyone has different experiences. What's worked for you, what hasn't worked for you, how can we do it better? You know? If you want to invoke change, be part of the change. You know, so many times we get lost sitting on the sidelines and complaining. But really, it's about getting involved and trying to create whatever it is you think needs to happen. So we've got the morning coffee, I'm not going to go over the list, but this is just things that the Chamber does. We've got the networking events, we've partnered with Chadley on the Culinary Festival, we're sponsoring a shopping passport to help get visitors into our members' shops. So those are some of the things that we're doing. I'll open it up though, if you all have questions and concerns or if someone can take notes, that'd be great.
Anybody have any questions? What could the Chamber do for you that it's not already doing? How can they be a better Chamber? Or are they doing everything you think they should be doing? How many of you are members, let me ask that question? And those that are, I'm not holding your feet to fire, but is there a reason why? Don't be afraid, no names given, no faces shown.
Aye. All right, I need Larry Sands, I need anybody who is as old as I am to try to remember and tell these people about the original SBA. It was awesome. It's not a divisive tool, it's a help.
The SBA was a committee of the Chamber of Commerce?
Yes, it was a committee of the Chamber of Commerce. So if any of you have any fears, talk to me, talk to Larry Sands, talk to Kathy Sands, try to find somebody that's older and as old as me, and we will enlighten you to the positivity of the SBA.
There's no one as old as you, Preacher.
That's okay, I got the white hair.
So I wasn't in this community when the SBA was around, but I did hear stories. And it was a small business association that stemmed out of the Chamber that basically helped bring the businesses together in a different light. And that's something seriously that we could consider. I mean, I know Georgetown, they have a downtown merchants association and they coordinate all things for the downtown square. And they work hand-in-hand with the Chamber. I don't think there's a stem from the Chamber, but they do work together. So, I mean, and honestly, if that's something that you guys are interested in pursuing further, let us know as you leave.
To counter that, that's what Tish has said, is that the same thing that you're trying to implement?
Exactly, the SBA is the same thing.
Yes.
It's exactly what it is.
Deanna asked if that was the same thing that Dawn was touching on earlier with the merchants association. The way they differ is, you know, the Chamber's focus is to be a support for our business owners and our business community. A merchants association dives deeper. There's where your collective efforts are going to come, that's where you're going to see marketing, that's where you're going to see people pulling together to create a different atmosphere experience for when there's events in town, things like that. And it helps promote consistency. I was talking to somebody yesterday, she said back in the day, every section of town had captains. And that all the captains would kind of get together and everybody there would have a certain way that their area looked, they all maintained the same business hours. It's just, you know, we want to be an attractive place and a pleasant place for people to come to because they're going to remember the experience that they had here, whether that be negative or positive. And if it's positive, guess what, next time they come, they're going to bring more people with them. But if it's negative, they're going to not only not come back, but they're also going to tell everybody else about the bad experience they had while they were here. And I was telling Chadley earlier today that I feel us as businesses, we serve as his clients, and his clients are the visitors to town. We have to make sure that us as a business community are present and open and good-natured and have excellent customer service when those visitors come to town. Because if his job is to increase hot tax revenue, he can only do that if our visitors coming to town have a nice time over here. Any other questions for Chamber-related though?
I was just going to say this. If Dawn will expand, all of what is coming to our downtown Main Street, with wide sidewalks, with street life that we've never had before, all of this is coming. It will be here by spring. We're literally, this community is going to probably start figuring out, maybe we need to start opening a little bit later on some of the shops because there's going to be lighting sidewalks and there's going to be people walking down the street back and forth. Maybe restaurants might also be a little bit altered. It's coming, it might not be here by Christmas Troll, but it's going to be here probably by early spring. Am I right?
You're very right. And I think the point, I think the point to keep in mind, what Larry's saying is very true. I don't think- Chamber, City certainly not, an SBA or merchants association, whatever you want to call it, they're not going to tell you how to run your business. It's your business, it's your roof at the end of the day. But I think the more together we are, the more we can lean in together and have a greater impact for your business and the other communities that are part of it. What Larry's saying is very true, and that is, spring of next year, when the lights get turned on, it's going to be such an enhancement, not a detriment, but an enhancement to what we have right now. You're going to want to do different things, you're going to want to maybe operate a little bit differently and maybe better service the folks who are coming in at night now as opposed to during the daytime. I cannot tell you the number of people who said, "If I just had a place I could walk at night in downtown Sletto, I'd be there." Some say, "I wish the business were open." But I will tell you, the big comment I hear is, "If I could find a place to walk at night, it would be great, where I wouldn't walk in the ditch or across the parking lot." Yes, sir? It's a great idea. It's a very good, he thinks we ought to have a big party. I think you're going to see something like that. Our goal is this, and that is, that is going to be the next chapter for Main Street in the downtown area. And I think it has nothing but brightness as far as the future goes. People like to criticize it because we're dealing with the pain of the construction process. I understand that. But at the end of the day, I think you're going to be pleased with the product. Yes, sir?
Here's the thing, I've been here for a long time, since 1993. I don't own a business, but I've been helping Spring House the last year and a half. And for years, I heard, I heard the people running Spring House say, "You don't get any business on Sunday or Monday, you don't get any business on holidays." You know, different day, they just said, "It's dead, different month, they say it's dead, blah, blah, blah." Okay? Okay. Recently, we had a renovation in Spring House, we haven't been there lately. Completely different one, we had it two years ago. And we have people now who are beginning to have it open on Sundays and Mondays to the days that we've heard for years, you know, business happens. Surprise, they did record days on Sundays and Mondays and holidays. So if you're not open on those days, as somebody smart eyes that one, you'll see the money on the table, okay? And for people coming down and trying to shop clothes, they just get mad and they don't do that.
I hear it every, I hear it every Sunday, it's open Sunday.
So you've got to keep them open though. I know it's hard, it's not easy, it's a reconstruction, people come back on their hours. But it affects everybody, all businesses. Because they come into your shop and say, "I've been to five shops, I want to go to give them all clothes."
Well, Darlene, the thing to piggyback on that on is, when they go back home to Austin or go to Dallas and say, "Well, why was your trip to Sletto, I got there and there's two businesses?" So that message, the word of mouth travels and then that story changes to the point where you end up at the State Fair of Texas and get cornered by somebody saying, "What do y'all do in your business community in Sletto? What are you doing?" Will remembers that very well.
I was just saying that, you'll be surprised if you have it, you have to try it. You know, when the day is dark, you have to try it. Now, you've got to have what people want at the price they're willing to pay and have less service, you know, because those are musts. If you don't do that, and I got one. But the other thing is, if you want help, if you need, if you know like fashion and stuff, I need help. You know, if you have something like a favorite shopper or a, you know, I don't have business, if I did and I was stuck in a hole, you know, I got it, I want to ask them a successful business, just, you know, come in and under surprise and, you know, give me your name, just let me know what it is that bothers you or that maybe could change, just simple stuff. And you see them for five years and you just don't notice it, but the new, the rise of this, they see the problem. So, you know, just consider that too, looking at each other a lot, you know, all your experiences.
Now, on the note of being open on Sunday, you need not be instant gratification because it's going to take a couple weeks for you to realize that you are open.
What he made, what he basically said was, you can't do it one weekend. Think that's all the problem. Judge it. You gotta give it a chance. Stay open, for example, Sundays for a month, for two months, and get a feel for it and let people know you're open.
Hey, Dawn, is there, you asked us about business plans and everything else. I, you know, I could go into a lot of different questions here. But is there, is there a vision statement for the town of Salado? Or, I know Chadley did a wonderful job last week in his presentation there. And it was basically branding. Okay? And, I mean, that's awesome. And I think the businesses do it to an extent. But is there a vision statement slash branding going on between the Chamber, the village, the tourism, to get kind of one central focus on what we're all talking about?
That's a good point. We have a comprehensive plan vision statement. Uh, it looks at the community as a whole, the residential, livability, those type of things.
I mean, like a sign on thirty-five or something, or a, you know, several signs from Bill'sboro all the way down to Houston slash get DOD involved.
Do not, do not have that now. But that's certainly something that I think is of value. I think it's important that we create a consistent message between the Chamber, tourism, and the village itself. And quite frankly, if there's an SBA that forms independently, that too.
Okay, I guess I'm confused here. So this is a business, I'm speaking directly from a business center. Son, here goes a squirrel here. So is it, is the Chamber doing that? Or the visitor center doing that? Or is the bit, the city of Salado, or the village of Salado doing that?
The, the branding piece is typically something that comes from the Chamber and tourism. And there's typically a combined and consolidated effort from that standpoint. Cities typically, larger cities have marketing budgets. Smaller cities don't have marketing budgets. But from a standpoint of planning, I think there's value. I think it's something we probably ought to do as a community, is sit down with all these bodies together and try to come up with a consistent, framed message that we can send out through these sources.
Thank you.
They're, they're the routes.
That's what, that's my whole point. And I'm gonna shut up after this. But just, you gotta kind of get one central focus on what's going on here. And I'm, I'm not downplaying it at all. When you're talking about setting up two or three different organizations, the SBA that we were talking about, the, um...
They're, they need to be part of that branding.
Merchants. So it's starting small. Get a vision, get a vision statement, branding, whatever that is. They go from there. Then maybe the other.
I, I think, I think what you've gotta do is you've gotta organize and let the people part that organization sit down and go through the branding process. There's buy-in.
Is that a...
Yeah. Because if you don't have the buy-in, if you're not organized, if you don't have the buy-in, you're not gonna, you're not gonna get anywhere with branding. It's gotta be something that everybody's on board with.
So I guess the two-part question is the, is the visitor center working on that?
So, so whenever I first, whenever we first kind of started this whole process of figuring out where it's later, the destination, I walked around and did a lot of interviews with, with business owners, mostly tourist-focused businesses, shops, restaurants, things like that. I took all that information and compiled a document that, um, that I condensed basically into, you know, who are we? What's our story? You know, um, who are we trying to attract? You know, all, all of those types of things. I have that. And that's what guides everything that I do in terms of marketing. Um, if you'd like, I can, uh, maybe at the beginning of this year, I'd be happy to hold, put together some kind of meeting where I share all of that and discuss that process and discuss how I arrived at that. Uh, but I, I want to make it clear that, um, all the business owners were very much a part of that process through everything. But they totally positive. Um, but, um, but yeah, so that, that, that does exist. And then, um, to...
Let me check, Chad, let me jump in real quick. It does exist from that initial level. As you all become more organized and gather and grow in number, that needs to be revised. That's not a one-time deal. That has to grow. And that has to be flexible as far as that brand and the message you said.
Totally. And, and, and as these organizations develop, as the Chamber develops, as a potential merchants association develops, um, they will work in tandem with me. And we will work together to make sure that that brand, if you will, um, is, is consistent. And, and I think we, I mean, I, I haven't read y'all's information. Maybe we should sit down and share. But I'm pretty sure we're in line. Because me and Amanda, everything we've talked about, pretty much daily, because our offices are right next to each other, um, everything to the most part in line. So...
Well, let me just say something to that real quick. I feel we are putting out a consistent message, even though our vision statements might be a little bit different. Because ours is about our business community, not necessarily visitors coming to the community. Whereas tourism is, you know, heads in beds, getting tur, getting visitors here and promoting our town that way. So we can, we do work hand in hand. Um, he and Amanda, their offices are right next to each other. And they are constantly bouncing ideas off each other and making sure that we know what each other's doing. Because it's important for us to have, have that camaraderie and consistency. So Amy, you got something?
I just wanna touch back on what you said about being open. I know a lot of us are just single, individual businesses, one owner, one person working. So it's not always feasible to work seven days a week. Or, I mean, everyone needs a day off. I mean, we all already work night, day, owning our own business. You go home, you're still working. Never ends. Um, but I do believe in consistency. So as this, I forget your name.
Dan.
Dan. As Dan stated, it's about being open and trying it consistently over time. For Laura and I, we've always been open seven days a week. That's just how it's always been. And fortunately, because we have each other, so we're able to alternate days off. We find that we cater to our locals on Mondays and Tuesdays. That's when they come in and shop. They don't wanna shop on the weekends when people are in town and it's busy. They shop on the days where it's not busy. Um, and I think as business owners, it's important to capture that audience also. It's not just about the tourists. It's about your locals. And how many times do we see on social media, oh, Salado has nothing for me, or Salado's tour expensive, or Salado this, Lato that, Salado's never open, whatever the case may be. And that's because they haven't come to visit us. They haven't come, they haven't shopped. Um, I had people come in today. They were like, oh, my gosh, we just opened a cafe. When did you open this up? How long has it been here? Oh, I haven't been here in like six months. They, they don't know. So it's important that you not only cater to the tourists, but you cater to the locals. That you let them know that you're open, that, that what you offer and things like that. And however we may achieve that, whether it's through marketing, whether it's through email system, phone calls, whatever. Word of mouth is always the best. Um, so just food for thought. Being open is excellent. Consistency is even better. And, um, catering to everybody, locals and tourists alike.
Can I add something to that? And that is, if you're more, gave each of us two ears. And a lot of times, our lives get a lot easier if we just use those two ears. Listen. Listen to what your customers are asking for. Listen to what others are saying. And modifying the fit. You gotta be flexible. Just like the concept's a great idea. And I think we need to involve more people in that branding process instead of just the Chamber and just tourism. I think the community needs to be part of that a little bit, to the point where we have some input on that. But listening and then truly hearing and being able to move and adjust, that's the way you succeed. You know, I talked to, there's, there's a gal owns a business on the north side. And unfortunately, she's not here tonight. On north side of Main Street, she swears she is the only person open on Main Street on the north side. And I don't know that that's totally the case. Because I've seen some others that are open on Sundays. But she feels alone. And how much communication takes place between the north side businesses and the south side businesses? Which is another thing, one of those SBAs or merchants associations solve.
Chamber of Commerce all the time, all the time. Northside, all the time.
Yep. And it's, it's, it's a pretty regular deal. And so the key is communicate. We have to operate together. We have to operate and recognize everybody's needs, everybody's strengths and everybody's weaknesses, and work together. Unification is the key in this deal, guys. And it's not going off in our own directions. So let me ask you this question. Has this been helpful? Has it? Would you like to have one of these, like maybe quarterly? Or do you wanna do it more frequently? What, we're, our goal is this. Our goal is to get this group in mass. Yes, sir?
Me personally, I'd almost like to see it monthly, although I don't know if it's transition process yet. No. Basically, I mean, this is a revitalizing, revitalization.
It is a revitalization effort. And that, and that's true.
Maybe a personal update on certain things.
Let's do it. Yes, yes, ma'am.
I call that for a swim, but it didn't, huh?
Thank you. So recently, I discovered that there is a social media site for business owners. Am I right? I only see three people posting on it. I've gone through it. I don't know. It's like, Salado Chambers, which is wonderful. And we recently posted an event on it inviting other businesses to contribute little promotionals or any kind of flyer, rack, you know? And we didn't have a very big response. So I just wanted to point out that there is that as well. The, um, the social media page that we could maybe all join in on and participate on. Pardon? Yeah.
So do we wanna do this monthly? Is that what I'm hearing? No.
Yeah.
Hardly.
I'm gonna say it during construction.
During construction, you want to do it monthly? Every other month? The rest I can't hear it outside. So... Every other month? For two months? At work? Until the construction's done, and then go quarterly? Ma'am?
Every month. Every month, every construction. Because then what's gonna happen? You're gonna have that lag time over in a month. And then you're back in square one day.
We are here, and you're back in call. So if you wanna do it weekly, we'll do it weekly. But monthly's fine with us. That, that works. Believe me, you, ask my wife, you don't want my cleaning skills. You don't want my cleaning skills. Then let's do this. Let's just plan on doing this monthly. And is this, is Tuesday night work best for y'all? We don't wanna go Wednesdays because of church night. Mondays is typically picking up the pieces. So Tuesday night, we'll just set it up as a regular meeting until construction's done. And then maybe we transition Christian to something quarterly. If you can't make it, you're under no obligation to make it. But let me tell you something. Let your fellow businesses who didn't come tonight show up. They shouldn't fear it. This is not some Chamber press show. This is not some village press show or tourism press show. It is trying to get as many people involved together and working in the same direction for the betterment of your community, your business community. Okay, guys? I'll take this.
These girls are unbelievable. If you don't know Laura, and you don't know Amy, wow. They keep me accountable. I've been through hell in the back the last three years. I have two parents dying in Little Rock. They keep me informed. They say, you're gonna be open for, you know, Friday? You gonna be open on Sunday? You gonna, gonna, yeah? Well, that's what they do for me. They prod me along. They hold me accountable. And I love them. And back in the day, we did more of that. I understand, Chris, if you don't wanna come every month, I'll take good notes. I love you. But some of these people here need help. And some of us who are old need to cough it up the help in the time.
No, you're right. Everyone here needs help. And may not be as, seeing help, maybe different help. You might be able, you might be the one with the experience that needs to come because you had that nugget that somebody else needed to hear. So, um, you're gonna send out a message on the next meeting? Okay?
Let me ask you this. Uh, we'll continue to hold it here. I'm told the air conditioner will be back on in mid-October. So my suggestion is, we squeeze City Hall. We've got seventy-eight chairs at City Hall. If we overflow, we'll put the civic centers as backup, as NBD. But, uh, if City Hall's okay with you all, it's air-conditioned. Pretty comfortable, it's air-conditioned. Uh, and it may be better than the sweatshop. So, um, we'll set the date a month from tonight and get you set. She said, she said she wants food.
I'll bring tea.
I'll bring tea. All right, we got somebody bringing tea. Thank you all again so much. Be careful. Just so you know, we've got storms coming in the next thirty to forty-five minutes.